Okay guys, are you ready? Hope you're doing good, how are you? Hi, how are you? Hi Lucen, hi TaoRoo, hi Shrimpy. How are you guys? Hope you're doing good! Very ready. So I saw you're gonna write something as well, right? I'll be logging because I'm writing my intern thing. Hi Kegaf, welcome in! Oh, and I will hydrate in just a second. Manju is gonna get her treat really quick. You're writing as well. So, I think we're gonna be productive together. Let me try something. It's my intern thing. Yeah, the report or something. Right? Everybody has to write a report for an internship? That's what I remember from mine. How many pages? How many pages? Oh, let me check. I'm currently trying to track my following crow. From yesterday to today, we got 2 new followers. I tried to... I'm trying to track it a bit so I can see how much I grow in what time. I'm reading what I made last week. Ooh, okay. Sounds good. Oh wait, I can cross off something from my to-do list. Hey, Manju! And another thing, I did... Guys, I did the dishes today, the first time since, I don't know, 1 week? Or even 2, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. But yeah. Hey, Manju! Sorry, I have to write something down. Which will probably... I was... I was pretty... We got to DM in a bit. DM? Did you send me a DM? Missed something? DM missing. Gone! Work! Why is it... Oh, next. Because I'm stupid. Ohhh, okay. I wish I had that for my intern. I had to write multiple pages every time. I hated that. Yeah, it is... Hi Poxius, welcome in! It is so much easier! Wait, I'm sending a order at half hour. Okay. You wanna laugh? Yes, I wanna laugh. Obviously, I wanna laugh. Always, always. I have to get the mic... I always forget the microphone. It's very far away from me when I start stream because it's in the way for normal day-to-day computer use. And every time I start stream, I forget to put the microphone close to me. Wow! Wow! Someone did not take the ban very well. Yeah. Last year, we had to do it out of nothing. Yeah, we always have to do it out of nothing, so... I want that... I don't wanna do any internship anyway. I have to look for jobs, by the way. Can you imagine? I have to write my bachelor thesis. I have to look for a job? And I need someone to do my taxes? Because that's due pretty soon as well. And I cannot do it on my own. I can't do my personal taxes, I can't do that. But the taxes for my VTubing business? Because you have to register it as a business the second you earn money with it. Yes, I need someone to do my taxes. So I have to find someone. I know you're tall and... It's true. Don't fuck with the tall people! We might be a little bit stronger than we look like. I mean, I look really skinny and I don't... I look like if the wind is strong enough, I fly away. But don't mess with us tall people. I'm not scared of anyone. I like to watch those people. Anytime there is some kind of drama, I like to watch it. I like to not get involved, but I like to watch it. Figure it out. Let the people figure it out on their own. But I like to, I like to, uh, watch it. Well, I look strong. Well, at least one of us looks strong. So this is for all my German viewers. So, "Ich habe heute meine Briefwahlunterlagen bekommen." "Und natürlich wähle ich." "Und alle da draußen, die auch für Deutschland wählen." "Bitte geht wählen." "Tut euch selbst hingefallen und geht wählen." "Ihr verschenkt eure Stimme wenn ihr es nicht tut." Okay, back to English. "Just had to make a small..." "One non-English announcement, but I had to make a small plea." "That the people have to go vote." "The elections are next week." Is it next week? Yeah, it's next week. "The elections are next week." "And people have to vote." Um, it's very important. I voted today. I got the letter voting because it's on a Sunday and there's no way for me to reach the voting office on a Sunday because there are no buses driving around on Sunday. I live very far away. Manju? Masno? Give me a second. Manju found something she's not supposed to have. Okay, I'm back. I am back! Well, now we continue writing to reset. What time is it? It's still time. I wanna start at 30. 5:30. Yeah, that's when I wanna start. I wanna talk to you guys a little bit, you know? I wanna talk to you guys. So how was your day, guys? Oh shit, how am I... Like, the second I'm thinking about writing, I'm getting tired. So how were your days? What have you been doing today? Oh, I forgot to clip the rage moment. I have to do that. To do that. So how was your day? Did you do anything interesting? Did you do something int...? I have to put that song in my playlist. It's only 11. Oh! What are your plans for today, Kegaf? What are your plans? Singing of 5am song. Waking up at 5am is crazy. That's just... By the way, I'm currently looking this way for chat because I put you guys on the big screen. Do that every... That's crazy! That's crazy! I'm not even asleep at that time because it takes me a long... I put my phone away at 2:30am, but I do not sleep until like 4:30 or 5am. I didn't expect to sit on bed and stay here. Oh, that's a good plan! I love that plan. You can stay on chat and chill a little bit with us. Yeah. You started at 6am. Excuse me? 6am? Wow! The first time I woke up today was at like 11pm, 11am. And then I got Manju, who was coming to me and laid down on my pillow. And then I fell back asleep, and Manju fell also back asleep. Yeah, we had a little cuddle party this morning, and then I woke up at like let's say 1pm. Yeah. But I wanna try to, um... I wanna try to get up earlier because I wake up, I get out of bed at 2pm or something, and I go back to bed at 11pm. I mean, I'm on my phone for a long time when I'm in bed, but still, I wanna try to get up earlier. Let's just see how that works. I think I should put an alarm. Yeah, because on my own, I won't wake up that early. So I have to set an alarm. Ooh, by the way, oh, thank you for the hot pat, TaoRoo! Oh, by the way, I continued the rigging of my mouth. You know, we started together the rig of my model. And I worked a little bit off-stream. I think I finished the eyes. And now I'm working on my mouth. Um, on that model. Like, it's the same model like this, but I started from the beginning. I tried to fix this model. But, um... Nah. It was too complicated. We're just starting all over. This one, we're trying to sleep, right? I mean... I'm not trying to sleep until like 1am. And after that, it... Okay, listen. Listen, I'm a tiny bit addicted to TikTok. Okay? Just a tiny bit! Tiny, tiny bit! So I need my nightly TikTok session. And usually, usually I am on TikTok for a few hours. My old phone has the starting thingy from TikTok burnt into the screen. Like, the little plus on the bottom, and then the "for you" page, and the... Yeah, that's burnt into my screen. I don't use TikTok. Yeah, don't start. Don't, don't, don't start. Don't start. I was like that back in the day. I was like, "Yeah, I don't need TikTok, that's for children." Then I downloaded it, and the algorithm is so good. I only see stuff I wanna see. I think it's funny. And, and you know? It's... Do not! Do not start using TikTok. Just, just don't. Why is she...? I'm not a rat, I'm a tiger. I'm a tiger. Let me get some tea. I am very addicted to TikTok, it's insane. Yes, there's another tag. That does not all... That does not qualify to be a rat. That qualifies to be an animal. Yeah. Akata is too... Hi Arusha, welcome in, how are you? She's like, "I'm not a rat, I'm a tiger." I'm a tiger. Everything's a rat. Oh, okay, okay. Someone seems to be not that active in school. What do you mean, new mods? They are the mods for a while now, for a few streams already. I'm gonna have one with Minecraft. Ooh! So you wanna have the cozy vibes in the background while you play Minecraft? What do you mean, even my roar sounds like a rat? What? Nah, I'm on bed now. Okay, so you're gonna go to bed soon, like, gonna sleep soon. I'm just here when the remotes aren't... Exactly, exactly. Shrimpy is only taking care of all of the stuff that happens when no other mods are here. Almost done, you haven't started. Well, I would have been also been done if I just had to answer a few questions, okay? And... But need to hear the loving... Aww! Hi Arusha, how are you? You should clip it and put it as your ringtone or your alarm in the morning. Something like that. The only question. Well, it's still not a lot. I'm pretty sure you don't have to write 60 pages. Do you? Undekripsi in every size is good. We got that clip! We already have that clip! Your clip already exists. And you can download it, and then put it as a ringtone or something. Yeah. Read more. With time, there will be more, um... There will be more things to clip and more, um... I don't know, more thingies you can. 2 pages? 2 pages? Wow! Wow! 2 pages. Are we reaching a new rank? Nice. But still, no new spirits. After? Let me check if there is an update. Is there an update? On it? Show me my library. We played this game for 93 hours already. We have 29 out of 31 goals achieved. Wow! Wow! It's up to date, so no new... No new update. I want more spirits! Give me more spirits! But yeah, we can get rid of all of these. Oh my gosh, um, give me one second. So we got 1 page. We wanna see if we can get 2 pages done today. And I also need, um... 1 clip. And maybe we missed something? We need to look for text person. I'm gonna do that first. Because that should be quick. Also the clip, I'm gonna do the clip as well first because that should also be very quick. No, wait, I wrote that. "Study time, then eat time for me, have fun." Yeah, you can, you can, you can, you can, while you sleep, stay in chat and, 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 um... Enjoy the relaxing cozy vibes? Yeah, you could do that. Back to the red prison. I am already in prison, Lucen! Do you see that? I'm a prison! And you can click. Oh, that would be cool! Yeah, go for it. Clip it. The German rage moment. Or you could check the timestamp for it because I'm gonna listen to it and I wanna see... Oh no, wait, you have to clip it. Shit, it's German! Oh, Flaku! You have feet! You get feet! Give me 1 second, I'm gonna come back to you for 1 second. But yeah, because you have to clip it for me because I speak German and I cannot listen to me speak German. I hate my voice. I can barely tolerate it in English. Tolerating it in German? Uh-uh. Uh-uh. Not gonna happen. So yeah, you have to... That would be very nice, so we can take that off. It's already done. And Flaku! Welcome in, how are you? Hope you're doing good! You redeemed feet! You redeemed feet. You can send me a message on Twitter? And tell me what... Hope you're doing... I'm good too, yeah. I'm good too. You can send me a message on Twitter and let me know, um... What type of feet you want. We have fishnets, we have white ones, we have nude, um... Nude, what's it called? Tights? Is it called tights? We got the cat paws. Stuff like, oh, we have fuzzy socks, like my usual go-to fuzzy socks. You can just let me know what you want. Just send me a message on Twitter and I will check if I already got a picture of it, and if not, you will probably get your picture tomorrow. But I think tomorrow is still okay, isn't it? So, yeah. Also, if you don't, for some reason, if you don't want to have feet pictures, you can also have a Manju picture. Um, who are they? I think Comet. Comet always redeems it for cat pictures. Thank you, Fishnet. Can I face pic? No. No face. No, no, no. I'm always checking when I take pictures. Is there a surface around me that could be acting as a mirror? And if someone could see my face? That would be not good. I rest you. Stay alive and I'm waiting. You know, there is one mod who knows what I look like. And her name is Pigasissi. She knows exactly what I look like. We even went to the swimming pool together, so she knows how I look. We even went to the swimming pool together, so she knows how I look like in a bikini. Uh-huh. Yeah, but I have to go study now. I will see you in twenty-five minutes.
Break time! Break time, I haven't done anything. I'm sorry guys, I haven't done anything. I forgot to put on the music for you! Why did nobody tell me? What, okay, what did I miss? Yeah, they, they, I don't... I was, I was gonna say there are no bikini pictures, but I'm just looking at my, my shelf next to me and there is... Definitely bikini picture, picture on there. Um, a bikini picture from, with me and Panda on it. So yeah, there, there, there are bikini pictures in the, the excess. I don't have a face on it, um, no. And thank you Flaku, I'm, I'm having, I try to have fun, let's, let's just say it like that. Lucen, why are you always ready with a bonking stick? I'm scared! I make my own music, oh... Gonna tell auntie, you're gonna tell auntie what? It's good morning! Um, I thought you purposely just said, "I mean..." I did not, I did not, I turned it off because it was annoying me while I was setting everything up. And I even, I even left everything like this, like you, like the, everything you could see. So I remembered to put it back on, but then I forgot anyways. Yeah. Gonna... We need a bonk redeem. I think we had one, we had one a while back, like, really in the beginning. So, yeah. Okay, after this break, clip time, go for it! Just, like I said, I didn't do anything yet, um, because I had to answer a friend. Um, you know, my bestie, mhm. We need a name for her. We need to throw, I do not have tits, okay? We cannot throw things at me, I do not have that. A spank redeem, excuse me, a spank redeem? Um, yeah, but I had to answer her. Because she sent me a long voicemail. Joseph. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be honest with you guys, that's not an option because it's the name of her mom. It's the name of her mom, so that's not an option. We're not calling her shrimp, because you are shrimp. We call her... We're gonna call her bunny, let's call her bunny, because I think that's her favorite animal. So she's gonna be bunny. She's gonna be bunny. Bestie bunny, bunny bestie? Hmm, something like that. Everyone is shrimp. Apparently, if you ask Lucen, I'm a rat, so... I think that's Alberta, no, 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 she's gonna be bunny. My bestie bunny. Yeah. So we got Pegasus, we got Panda, we got Bestie Bunny, we got Tiny Tiger. We got Mama Tiger and Papa Tiger, or, or Papa Choco, however you wanna call him. Everybody has a name now, rat number two, there will be... Bunny the funny. Hmm, never think about that. Rat number two. Well, I don't think she would appreciate being called rat, let's just say that. She's not a fan of them, but she's a fan of bunnies, so that's why she's gonna be bunny. Now I cannot, I have to remember that because, yeah. I'm probably gonna forget. Papa Choco back. Papa Choco won't be back. Did you guys know I cut contact to him and his side of the family? I, I'm no contact with this, uh, with his side of the family. Tiny Tiger as well, Mama Choco as well. We're no contact with his side of the family. So, I don't think he's gonna be back. For fun, this may be. But... There won't be a boyfriend tiger for a while. Um, okay, so I'm gonna go back to study. Gonna do the looking for tax person really quick. It should be easy, I think, guys don't forget to bring something. And, hmm? Oh, that's hot, ah! That's hot. I will see you guys in 25 minutes! Oh shit, oh shit, oh shit, oh shit, oh shit. Wait, wait, wait. I forgot. I didn't hear it. I didn't hear it, oh my gosh, guys. I was listening to Bunny Bestie. And, oh my gosh. Sorry, guys. How much did you hear of that voicemail? Hopefully not too much. Well, yeah, obviously, if she sends me a voicemail, I'm gonna listen to it. And that's not cheating. It's not cheating. My number is mine. Mine alone. Oh, we can, by the way, we can do that. I cannot do that today. Well, I can. I looked for some, but I have to call them tomorrow during open hours. Yeah. Parrots? I think they're kinda okay. I do not really have an opinion about them. They're... I think they're fine. They're alright, I guess. It's not a pet I would get. But I think they're alrighty. I don't have anything against them. Why are you asking? I'm watching vids of them in Terrytime. You're gonna buy one? Do you know how much work that is? And do you know that you should buy two? Not just one? TikTok, I can't see your TikToks. No. You did the clip? Okay, thank you. I'm gonna look at it. I'm gonna watch it later. Magazines, it's not a problem. What do you mean it's not a problem? Medical students, I mean, you're gonna have so much work after you're done? Wow. Are you sure? Are you sure? Pretty sure it's not, you have to have at least 125 hour shift a week or something. Medical people are always busy. Please don't buy pets on a whim. Please inform yourself properly, okay? Please inform yourself properly, not just like, "Oh, I saw a few videos." Parrots are a big responsibility. It's not like a cat or a dog. It's okay, my roommate stays home all day. So your roommate is okay with you getting two parrots? Okay. I mean, I cannot stop you. I cannot stop you anyway, but yeah. Why are birds bad? I mean, obviously, there are drones from the government. Duh. But why are they bad? I like pigeons. Pigeons are cute. Pigeons are cute. Yeah. Everybody hates them, but I like them. Baby cute. You know what parrot I like? The one from SpongeBob. I don't know the name, but the parrot from SpongeBob got the bird on his shoulder. I like that one. That's cute. They're questionable things, and they were made to be... Yeah, they were made by the government. That's true. Can teach my parrot how to scream it. That's a good choice. That's a good choice. I'm gonna go back to study. I will see you in 25 minutes.
Break time, let me just... Okay. Break time, we are, I would say, half a page? Half a page, around that? Yeah, something like that. And I don't know why the line command is not working. I-I checked on Streamlabs, because I was like, "Why the fuck is it not working?" Doesn't make any sense. Does not make any sense. By the way, today for the long break, it will be a long break, because I have to cook. I haven't, I have no ready meals left, I have to cook now. I have to add... I don't want to, but I wanna eat the food I'm making, because I haven't had spaghetti bolognese for a while now. I'm really, I really, it's one of my favorite dishes. Making that today. So you will be a little bit longer, you will be alone a tiny bit longer, today, I think. But yeah, I think you, I think you will survive it. Don't worry, you, you, you can do it. You, you're... Chat, you are all grown ups, you're big boys and girls. Um, you can do it. Also the mods I hear so behave. Nuh-uh. Nuh-uh what? Huh? What are you nuh-uh? Why? Why nuh-uh? Hmm? Just call. Oh, okay, just call. Yeah, I'm really proud, we already have a page. Even though I've been just, been getting distracted quite a lot today. I have been getting distracted a lot. It's easy to distract me, you know? It's really easy, because I really don't want to write that shit. I really don't want to, but I have to. So it's really easy to distract me. It's very easy. I'm aiming for two pages, but if we get one and a half pages, I would be fine with it. I would be absolutely fine with it. I'm gonna do it, so. We gotta do it, we can do it, we will do it. Should we start writing instead of one page, half pages? Then we can cross off more. That would be, that would be so much more motivating. Can and we will, we, yes, of course, we can and we will. Mm-hmm. No sending you hot gossip. Don't worry, you guys sending me hot gossip will never will never be as distracting as the hot gossip I got on my phone. And it's not even gossip. It's just daily life stuff. That is more distracting than hot gossip. You sure? Yeah, I'm very sure. I'm very, very sure. By the way, guys, we got eight entries into boyfriend applications. Just saying, we got eight already, that's insane. I'm so excited. I'm so excited for that. I haven't looked at the answers. I have not looked at the answers yet. Or make something. Um, you're gonna, you're gonna make the same dish I'm gonna, I'm gonna make. Um, spaghetti bolognese. Mm-hmm. Who will be my new dad? We will see, we will see. It could be also a new mom for you, because I didn't limit it to men. Girls could also participate. Okay, let me see how to make it. It's so easy to make. What do you mean? You have to look how to make that? Well... For me, it's easy. But yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to study. Whoever does, thank you for the line, that was the next thing I was gonna say. Whoever wants to do the line, do the line, because the command is not working anymore. For whatever reason. Uh, guys, don't forget to drink something. I'm gonna go back studying.
Break time. Let me just finish this one sentence. Uh. Perfe-. Are you guys battling with the line now? Guys, don't forget to drink something. You're almost done with one page, by the way. Maybe it's, it's just... Three more lines. Three more lines. Three more lines and we are done with one page, which is pretty good, even though I, I have a pretty hard time with the sources right now. If we're getting on. I believe so too. At least one and a half pages we can do. Two pages, I think is also possible. So, yeah. We can do it. We can absolutely do it. We're getting, we got it. Yeah, we're getting that two pages. And then the next study session, I will probably finish this page. So, we're gonna go over to the second. And I don't know how much I will write on the second page in that one study session. But I hope it's enough. So, yeah, I hope it's enough. I hope. But yeah, after, after that next study break, uh, study session, we're gonna have a long break. I'm making dinner. I put some YouTube on for you guys. And you guys entertain yourself a little bit, um. So, yeah. We can do it. We can, we can absolutely do it. Have to find a new source, which will take some time. But I'm sure if I find a good source, if I find a really good source, we can do it. We can absolutely do it. Just have to find a good source. Oh my gosh. Oh wait, oh! Oh, the clip already shows on Discord. I forgot that it does that. Or did you put it in your total? Oh, you put it yourself in here, right? Okay. I thought it does that autom- automatically. I was like, "Wait a second." Yes, she sounds communicating. I know! I know. I don't have it, but I have a lot of friends. And it's, it's, it's not easy. Not easy. Yeah, it takes a lot of energy out of a person. Are we doing one thing for two minutes and get sidetracked? Yeah, I feel that. I'm getting distracted the whole fucking time. I don't even have ADHD. Well, not officially, maybe unofficially. Who knows? I don't know. Could be. It's way too easy to distract me. I have a really bad, oh shit. Do you, do you get medication for it? Do you get any medication for it, or are you just on your own? On my own. Oh shit! That's bad. That's bad. That's bad. I'm gonna watch the clip next study session, I completely forgot about it, but I'm gonna watch it now. So, I will see you in 25 minutes, I'm gonna watch the clip really quick and then I'm gonna go back to studying.
Break time guys, break time. Why is it... Give me a second, it's not working like I wanted to work. I'm gonna get out of prison and we're gonna go like this and get the text away. And hi Hyasa, welcome in, how are you? Love you doing good. I'm gonna look up a YouTube video for you guys while I'm cooking. Um, let's see. Well, I just found something I have to save really quick. Give me a second. I'm gonna keep working on my medical stuff. Go for it. Work on your stuff. Work on your stuff. The... Ooh, I'm curious about that. We're gonna watch that together. Oh, I could also... You go, now you can see what I'm seeing. Always doing good thing. Well, there will be maybe a time where you're not doing good. I cooked 100 years of burger, you're gonna, you're gonna watch this. Gonna let you watch this. See, let's take the game music away. Okay, so mods, are you here? Yes, you are. Lucen is here. And Tauro was here also, not too long ago. It's not showing it to those. It's like, who's Dr. Mike? Who is Dr. Mike? But yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go cook real quick. And then I'll always see you guys. So please be nice mods, take care of everyone.
Looks very different than the burgers we know today.
There's no cheese, but at least there's no vegetables either.
It is basically meat and sandwich bread. Let's see how it tastes. Cheers everybody.
Cheers.
I'm clear on what anybody says. That's delicious.
Look, it's really good, but it feels wrong that it's in toast.
Yes.
I'm okay with it being in toast, but I just feel like it needs some cheese, it needs some sauce.
Funny you said that because nowadays they actually make it like this sir, and it has cheese for you.
Oh man.
But that's not how it started, that's what we are right now. And this burger everybody, still being served today. Cheers everybody.
Oh my god, it's such a mess. Cheers.
Oh, that's so much better with the cheese and the tomato and the onions.
Talking about that, there was a huge upgrade from this decade to the next. Check it out.
In the 1920s, White Castle was born. The price started at only 5 cents. That's about 70 cents today. They are known to have invented the slider and the concept of carryout. Now the way they made their sliders are quite unique. First thing to do is to grab some beef. Then to make them at home, you wanna lay down some parchment paper and immediately spread a good amount of beef. We wanna get them super flat. So for that, I put another parchment paper right on top and pressed it with another sheet. Now I laid it down on a cutting board and using the back of my knife, I went ahead and scored the beef. This will allow me to break them once they get frozen. Now I removed the parchment paper, if you're following the original recipes, you must poke 5 holes. You can do it just by using a chopstick. Once they were all done, into the freezer it goes to firm up. After about 1 hour, I took it out and look, we got our beef ready to be cooked. But there's one more thing that we gotta do, and that is to use the onions. They don't use fresh onions on White Castle. They actually use this, dehydrated one. So we gotta bring them back to life. To do that, you just gotta soak them in water. And funny enough, they still use this method today. In case you are wondering what kind of buns I'm using, these are Hawaiian sliders. They're gonna work perfectly for this recipe. So to cook them outside, I went. I hit up the cast iron griddle and placed all of the onions in there together with the water. Because instead of getting a nice crust on our meat, we're gonna steam it, yep, right on top of the onions. And funny enough, the bread goes right on top of the beef. That's the way they still do it today. You see, the idea is that the steam will also heat up the buns. I'm not gonna lie though, it feels weird putting the bread on top of the beef. Because once it's fully cooked, the next thing is to assemble. First, on one side of the bun, they add a little bit of mustard. Next, they scoop the onion and the beef, as now there's left to do is to add some cheese, followed by pickles, and top it off with that mustard bun. Now this is the White Castle Slider. In the 1920s, this was extremely popular, and costing only 5 cents, it was a hit.
The 1920s burger, White Castle Slider.
Well, I'm not gonna lie bro, I saw it being cooked and uh, I'm not very excited, let's say that.
You don't like the steaming action on the raw meat, bro?
There's no crust, this thing is gray and sad, bro.
This looks like a boiled burger.
White Castle sounds like we're in the dungeon eating the burger.
There you go. 1 nickel everybody, doesn't get any better than that. Let's give it a try, tell me. Cheers everybody.
Cheers. It's so soft, it's not a good soft.
It's super tender, that's why the pickle is there to give you a little crunch.
We definitely have way better burgers nowadays, but at the start, 1920s, this is pretty good.
Tell you one thing, it's pretty good. It's time to go on to the next decade.
In the 1930s, times were tough. It was the Great Depression. But there's one burger that really stands out from that decade. That would be the Oklahoma Fried Burger. Invented by Ross Davidson to keep burgers prices low, he decided to press a handful of onions into his patties to extend the beef supply. Now to make this burger, there's a very interesting technique, and here's how. First, we go ahead and get the griddle nice and hot. Now place the beef right on top, smash it down a little bit, and as it's cooking, add a good amount of onions. Then of course, smash it down even more. Now this burger doesn't get any easier than that to make. As after flipping it so that the onions can cook, you wanna go ahead and toast the buns. Now in its most basic form, this is it. We got bread, beef, and onions. It is simple, it will feed hungry people, and at the same time, is it delicious? Well, let's find out.
The Great Depression Burgers from the 1930s, also known as the Oklahoma Fried Onion Burgers. Are you guys ready to try this?
Smells great.
That's right everybody, cheers.
Cheers.
Oh, that's a lot of onion.
That's too much onions.
That's definitely too much onion.
Just the onion, the patty, and the bun is just way too simple for me. What do you think Leo?
The onions have such an overpowering sweetness that, that's what you get mainly, not a lot of beef.
Yeah, but Leo, come on bro.
Makes sense at the time, I mean.
They didn't have the money, bro. Chill out.
Times are tough, I get it, I get it.
When times are tough, you gotta feed a lot of people, still, this is a delicious burger. Enough, next decade.
Okay, I'm back for a few minutes, we have to wait until the water is boiling. And then, I can continue cooking. What did I miss? Oh, I missed a lot. Oh, there is a line. Is it? No way, way further down. There we are. Why, why do you wanna get bullied? What? You didn't get cake, right? It's a burger. Excuse me? Lucen will not let you guys riot. Asking for a friend, of course. Oh yes. Guys, don't forget to drink something.
That's a cheeseburger right there everybody, wow.
That's way better McDonald's.
I'll just try the burger. I will just try the burger right now as well. They would be so quick. It would be gone. I'm cluey, why, why are you, what? Eating clue is not good. Oh, I love those cars. Old cars are so pretty. When invited, it's swallow. I can't do that, but... I even have to chew yogurt. It doesn't have any chunks, but I have to chew it. Otherwise, I cannot swallow it. Chew everything. Soup, I have to chew. The only things I don't have to chew is drinks. If I, if I'm drinking a smoothie, I have to chew it. I could borrow you some crayons for some change. But only the good tasting colors, okay? No, no, I suppose you ever drank some crayons lately. When is crayon day? I, I would expect blue to taste good, like blueberry. And then, um, yellow would be lemon, which would also be very good. I think those are the only good ones. Red would be probably cherry, so it's not good. Green, apple. Mm-hmm, that could, that should be good. Probably tastes like ruby. Of course you're gonna love the good colors. Yeah, of course I know. What did you expect? I want that burger so bad right now. It could be strawberry. Ooh, if it's strawberry, then it's good. If it's cherry, then it's not good. And if it's raspberry, eh, depends. But it could be blackberry, mm. Also not good. I love the Big Mac sauce so much. I love that shit. Oh, I could, I could take a bath in it. Crayon, don't expect a lot. Black is licorice, okay, I could live with that. Black is licorice. Pink could be raspberry. I'm so fucking hungry right now. Burger really makes me want to order some, yes, same, but McDonald's doesn't, it doesn't deliver to my place anymore. Which is sad. Pink should be radish, because we need color, they're disgusting. No, radishes are not disgusting. Radishes are kinda yummy. Let me see if my water is cooking. It's not. So we still have some time. By the way, if you have, if you have a burger and, and it does not drip all over you with sauce, it's not a good one. I can't eat the red is yummy and black is non-yummy. I think it's a rare, it's yummy, and blackberry is not yummy. I think we're all. I think so too. We already noticed that I have a pretty particular taste. Purple could also be, uh, purple onion. Oh, that would be, that would be awesome. I like onion. Okay, but why is it square? I would need to mix colors because she would take robot out of. You know, there is a German, um, I don't know if she's famous, but she's kinda famous because she was in TV and stuff. She always has an onion in her handbag. And her reasoning is because it tastes good. And no one ever says your breath smells bad. They always say your breath smells like onion, which is not the same as breath smells bad. And she always has an onion in her bag and takes a bite out of it when she feels like. That could be me. Dark green crayons is apple and light green crayons is salad. I don't know who she is, um, but if you see her, you know her. Oh yeah, that girl exists as well. But yeah, I don't know who she is. She's one of the older generation famous people. If you see her face, you know her. But I have no idea what her name is. Because like she's more of the older generation entertainment. Oh, I want that fucking burger. I will be back. I think my water is boiling.
Bacon on a burger is just so damn good.
But now, let's jump on to the next one, the nineteen nineties.
Now, that's a good era right there.
In the nineteen nineties, things were not very healthy. And Pizza Hut invented the stuffed crust pizza. That was a hit. There was one burger that was also a hit. It was called the Big and Tasty from McDonald's. They made that to fight the Whopper from Burger King. And the Big and Tasty had its own sauce. To make it, it was pretty simple. Into a food processor, I threw in one egg yolk, followed by oil, and blend everything on high. Then I added paprika, followed by salt, sugar, garlic powder, mustard, barbecue sauce, and lime juice. Now blend everything on high, and there you have it, the Big and Tasty Sauce. Now it's called Big and Tasty for a good reason. We got a big burger. So it starts off on the grill. And unlike Five Guys, it gets seasoning. A good amount of salt followed by freshly ground black pepper. Now to assemble, it's pretty simple. We got a good amount of Big and Tasty Sauce, followed by Swiss cheese, that mustard patty that was just cooked, another slice of cheese, shredded lettuce, diced onions, tomatoes, and that big top bun. Now this is the Big and Tasty. I can't believe McDonald's took this one out of the menu. I can understand the reason why, and you're about to find out really shortly. Because take a look at this burger. Come on now. I could have that burger any day.
Welcome to the nineteen nineties.
Ah, you see, in the nineties, they did it right.
That's a big burger.
There's a reason it's called Big and Tasty, everybody. So the Big and Tasty is Big and Tasty. Let's try it and let's rate it. Cheers, everybody.
Cheers. Bro, that is so thick.
It's a thick patty.
Completely different than anything we've had, and the cheese is different too.
I don't know how I feel about the cheese. I think American cheese would have been better.
It's good, but it's so different that I enjoy it. But now, let's jump into the two thousands.
Now I'm a teenager.
Now in the two thousands, Wendy's was having a problem. Since their owner passed away, they created the Baconator so that it would blow up with young men. And that's exactly what happened. It saved Wendy's from selling the company. And the burger costed about four bucks. The Baconator still exists today. And to make it, it's quite simple. First, we need to cook up two square patties. And don't forget, fresh never frozen. Give your buns a nice toast, then add in mayo and ketchup. Both of the patties got American cheese, followed by three slices of bacon each. Now place one on top of the other and lay it down on that bottom bun. Now this is the Baconator. And even today, it makes a lot of young men really happy. Don't believe me? Well, here we go.
The two thousands, the Baconator.
The year of no vegetables. Let's go.
We just had bacon for the first time on a burger, and now we have too much bacon on a burger.
You ready to give it a try? It is still going on today, so let's see if the Baconator is actually a good nater or a bad one. Wow, that was so cheesy.
That was so cheesy, guys.
The good nater or the bad nater?
Cheers.
Cheers. This tastes almost identical to the Wendy's Baconator.
Yeah, half pound of beef, six slices of bacon. I mean, it's crazy good and by far the unhealthiest burger on this list so far.
Yeah, but it's the tastiest one, I'll tell you that.
It is still good, but on two thousand and ten, things started getting a little weird.
This is when social media is at its peak, and everybody wanted to have the next burger. That's when this was invented, the ramen burger. Now if you've never tasted this, you should, as this was very popular in the twenty tens. But the original version was like this. First thing, the noodles. You wanna get two containers just like this. Lay down some clinch plastic so things would get out easy. Once you have both of them, go ahead and cook some instant noodles and mix them up with some eggs. You should have a texture like this in the end. Now place them on a bowl that we just made, press them down with another container. As now, you wanna go ahead and cook them until they're fully solid. Because you wanna toast those noodles exactly the same way you do with buns. Oh yeah, now you can be as creative as you like going forward. But the original version was like this. You wanna go ahead and cook up some quail eggs, get them nice and crispy. To assemble, you wanna use a little bit of teriyaki sauce on the bottom noodle bun, followed by that burger we just cooked, and those fried quail eggs. Finish it off with more teriyaki sauce, and of course, the top noodle bun. Now get ready for an Instagram photo and post it online. As this was very popular in the two tens. The question is, how did it taste? Well, let's find out.
And here we got two thousand and tens.
Yep, things got weird.
That is not a burger.
Come on, man.
What is that? That's noodles on a patty.
Okay, can we just try it before it breaks?
All right, enough talking. Welcome to the two thousand and tens. Cheers, everybody.
Cheers. It's feeling good though. It's feeling good. Okay, hold on. Nobody told me that the noodles were flavored. Is there like some kinda teriyaki sauce or something on it?
Hundred percent.
Damn, I hate to say, but this is actually good.
It is delicious, everybody. I'm telling you.
You made it once, I'm glad you made it again. But damn, this is the messiest burger in the world, okay?
This is a really good burger, but not as good as the burgers we have nowadays, like the burger that changed my life, Google's creation.
This is a smash burger, everybody. I highly recommend. It is a delicious burger. If you've never had a smash burger done properly, I highly recommend. But, hope you guys enjoyed this video. Let me know in the comments down below which one did you enjoy the most and which one was something that you've never seen before. If you did enjoy the video, hit that thumbs up. If you're not a subscriber, be sure to subscribe. And we'll see you guys on the next one. Take care, everybody. Bye bye.
I will be back in just a moment. Let me just put on like the first video I just saw. I'm sorry, it will take a little bit longer. What did I miss? I missed a lot. I have to go back to the kitchen. My food is boiling.
Google, that rotisserie chicken looks so weird.
Yeah, what happened to the bones? They turned into rice, bro.
Welcome to the nineteen tens.
Chickens are one of the most common and widespread domestic animals in the planet. The first report of eating chicken dates back more than two thousand years ago. But you bet that cavemen were for sure eating this delicious bird. In the nineteen tens, this bird became quite fancy. This is Balotin Chicken, and it was quite popular during this time. To make it, the first thing you gotta do is to get a nice bird. Then the key here is to start on the back and remove all of the bones from the chicken. Once you're done, this is what it should looks like. Next up, to get it seasoned. For that, I just added a good amount of salt followed by freshly ground black pepper. However, the stuffing was quite fancy. To make it, the first thing you wanna do is to saute some mushrooms. Once the golden brown color was reached, throw in some green onions followed by garlic. Mix everything well and cook it a little bit more. As the next thing that goes in is some rice. But for coloring and flavor, we went ahead and added some smoked tamarind. Mix everything well and combine the ingredients together. Because now, to cook the rice, throw in some chicken stock, followed by salt and black pepper. Stir everything around and bring it to a simmer. Cover it up, and once the rice is fully cooked, here we have the stuffing. The key here is to add it to the chicken. And as the fat melts, it will flavor this rice even more. As now, the only thing left to do is to go ahead and tie it up. As once it's done, check it out. We have our beautiful Balotin Chicken ready to be roasted. And on the nineteen tens, they used either a smoker or a wood fire oven. You gotta pick whichever one you think is gonna be best. Because regardless of which one, when you're done, it should be nice golden brown just like this. And when you cut it up and take a look, now this is a fancy chicken. To finish it off, often it was served with gravy. Just a simple one though, because as you can clearly see, this is a fancy meal. But is it really good? Is it worth the amount of work? Well, let's find out right now.
So what do you guys think, gentlemen?
It looks fancy.
Never seen anything like that. That looks so unique.
Enough talking. Cheers, everybody. That gravy is amazing, everybody. This is very difficult to make. It's time consuming, but it is amazing. What do you think, description guy?
On the very first chicken in this video, I'm blown away. I've never come across this dish before, but to have so much juice from the gravy, so much flavor from the seasoning, the rice, the vegetables inside, I taste mushroom.
This thing is amazing though. The flavor is really good. It's got a little bit of smokiness to it.
Yes, it does. The rice, because of all the chicken fat rendered inside of the rice, this one was a very nice, delicious, fancy chicken, but the next one is far away from being fancy.
In the nineteen twenties, New York style pizza started becoming extremely popular. And Lombardi's in New York City was selling their pies for only five cents. Now that is a good deal. Another great dish brought by Italian immigrants was Chicken alla Milanesa. This incredible way of enjoying chicken is simple, easy, and delicious. Let me show you. Here we have some chicken breasts. The first thing to do is to flatten it out. I like to use a big hammer. As long as you get this thing nice and flat, that's the goal. Once that's done, you wanna go ahead and beat up some eggs. As all you have to do now is to coat that chicken really good with the egg wash, followed by a good amount of breadcrumbs. Now heat up the oil to three hundred and fifty degrees Fahrenheit and throw it in there. Once you achieve a nice golden brown color, go ahead and flip to the other side. As once both sides are nicely golden just like this, set it down on a cooling rack so that it can stay crispy, and immediately throw in some salt. As once it's done, you wanna throw in some parsley for coloring and flavor. And of course, it is not finished if you don't put some lemon wedges right on top. The question is, is this as good as it looks? Well, let's find out right now.
And here we have the nineteen twenties. What do you guys think?
Dude, that looks so good.
You know why? Cause it's fried. I know you guys already.
I'm used to steaks having a golden brown crust, not a chicken like this.
Let's give it a try. Cheers, everybody.
Cheers.
How can you go wrong?
That's amazing, everybody. Come on, man.
It's simple, but it's executed so perfectly. It's a very flavorful chicken breast. It's juicy. That crust is so crispy. It's not greasy and saturated at all. It's nice, it's light, it's great.
This was easy to make, and every country has a different variation of this one here. Unlike the next decade, where everything turned upside down, it's a complete one eighty.
Times were tough in the nineteen thirties. Foods like beans, potatoes, cornmeal, and bread was what most people ate. Meats like steak and chicken was extremely expensive. And in order to stretch out a meal, chicken and dumpling was created. A simple meal that is delicious and filling? Let me show you how simple it is to make. Everything starts off with whatever pieces of chicken you have available. First thing to do is to boil the chicken. This method was extremely popular during that time. Once that's done, you wanna go ahead and shred it. Now remember, we gotta stretch out this meal as much as possible. Meaning, we're not gonna be using the whole breast, so we're only be using half of it. So the next step is to go ahead and do something that is called a mirepoix. We're talking about onions, carrots, and celery. Throw that up on a skillet with some olive oil and stir it up. Then add some garlic and mix everything well. As now, you can do two things. Use the water that you just cooked the chicken, or if you were lucky, buy some chicken stock. As now, you wanna let it simmer for a little bit. And as that's happening, you wanna go ahead and make your dumplings. For that, into a bowl, throw in some all purpose flour, followed by salt, baking powder, parsley, black pepper, chives, butter, an egg, and finish it off with milk. Now mix everything together until it becomes a dough. But once everything is fully combined, you should have something like this. Now you just wanna split it in small pieces, and your dumplings are ready to go into the broth. But first, add in some chicken, then immediately go in with the dumplings. Season it with salt for taste, and you wanna let it simmer so that it can cook the dumpling all the way through. Because once it's done, your chicken and dumpling is ready. Now I'll tell you one thing. If you grow up eating this, you know how good it really is. But I understand if you've never had it, you don't know what it tastes like. So for that reason, let me show you what's like for two people that never had this thing. Because at least to me, this is delicious.
Okay, guys, my food is ready. What did I miss in chat? Probably a whole lot. Probably a whole. I cannot concentrate when you talk. Stop talking. Okay, what did I miss? Okay. Kegov is ordering a burger now. I want one too. One more too. Welcome back, Tauro. We are eating now. Yeah, what did you eat? Some meat with rice. Rice always a good choice. It's been saying when I want to. Do you mean just get a cheeseburger with bacon? That's all you need. Bacon, tomatoes, a lot of cheese. Um, yeah, that's that. Okay, so I chose this one for us to watch. Cause I think it's interesting. I think it's interesting. So, let's go. Don't forget the condiments. You need ketchup, and you need mayo, and you need mustard, and onions. Caramelized onions on burger. Best choice ever. I love schnitzel. Great, now I want a schnitzel. Who makes knudle with schnitzel? It looks so wrong, but it's not wrong. Or we'll just bake in another one with everything. Today, we don't have any crunchies, by the way. Today is only, only whatever that sound is. Whatever that is. We're gonna have that today. No crunchies. And just like Vina schnitzel, like nothing on there, just a slice of lemon, and of course fries. Of course fries, very important. That knoodle is not done. Yeah. Of course it's good. I gotta wait ten minutes for my food. Oh no. It's around half of the video. It's around half of the video. I need more sauce. I'm gonna get more sauce really quick.
Dumplut is actually one of my favorite German desserts. Every time I go to a German restaurant, I have to order it. That's why I really want my family to try it out and maybe they would like it as much as I do. Okay, first we need flour. The recipe said 250 grams. I do not have a scale here at home in my parents' house. So let's do the math. This one is 500 gram flour.
I was planning to make this dish last for two days. I don't think it's gonna last for two days. I think it's gonna only last for today. What's she making? Did anyone pay attention? What is she making now?
A measurement here. So here how I'm gonna do it. This is a half a liter of bottle of water. So one fourth of it is 125. I think my mom is like flawless. And one large egg. 20 gram sugar and so...
No, okay, I was playing with my dog. Guys, you have to pay attention.
And they said they use melted butter, which means it's liquid and it look like oil. Why don't we just use oil instead? I have vegetable oil here, I'm just gonna put it in. God damn worry. Now I really miss my kitchen in Germany where I have literally every machine possible for cooking. Over here, I have nothing. I have to kneel this by myself too. You know what? I don't have a machine, but I do have some niece that I could keep ordering to... She's doing good. Let's go. Okay, hết rồi em. It's been 10 minutes and she's doing very good. I think you can stop now. Thank you very much. We have this mixture that doesn't stick on my hand anymore. Now we have to cover it and leave it rise for around an hour. See you in an hour.
See you in an hour, okay.
This is so far, it's basically how we made bun in Vietnam. It's just that at this step, in Vietnam, we would just flatten it and put a bunch of meat in here. And then we will steam it.
What meat that mixture? Yeah, me too.
We're going to, what is it called?
What's she making?
Dry steam it, I guess, so that we have a crusty, salty part down there. Thank you. So for the next step, we have to dry steam it and we actually need butter. I'm just gonna replay.
Oh, I know what she's making.
But we do need meal this time and I agree with them. So what I'm going to do is that I'm going to use my presses.
Alright, I'm kinda... I feel that. I feel that. Manjo, are you okay? Let me help you.
Let's start with put some oil in there. Water. I really hope I didn't put too much here. Because I don't have any measurement. I just do it as I feel like. I'm putting here some sugar and some salt. There has to be salt. I really like it when it's salty. Now we are cooking it. I hope I read the recipe correctly, but I'm going to put them in now. I think I add too much water, but now it's too late to back down, so let's stop. It's working. We did it. Now that we are back to the rice part, let's talk about the sauce to eat with the dumplut. You can either choose vanilla sauce or potato sauce. I would go for vanilla sauce because it is more authentic. I bought this from Germany. All of them are from Germany. Mix this in with 40 gram of sugar, with half a milliliter milk. You know, I am very smart. Since I don't have milk, but I do have this whipping cream.
Let me just throw in this. That's cooking. You just go by feelings. Just go by the feeling.
We are entering a very critical stage with the dumplut. There's not much water.
Oh, dumplut!
It's gonna turn crispy anytime soon or it's gonna burn. So you have to smell, you have to pay attention to it. At the same time, do not open it. Cause you have to let it rise heavily in there. I think I made a mistake by multitasking right now. I'm taking care of the vanilla sauce and I'm taking the dumplut at the same time. I hope I don't mess both of these tasks up. All of the water is now out of the pan and it just the oil left and it's actually frying it at the moment. It's sizzling. This is science, you guys. Moment of truth. I think I did pretty good.
I'm not a big fan of dumplut. But... Wait, what? You burned your health? Oh, almost. Okay, almost. Yeah, never have you fluffy the walls, like, that's all. Well, I just burned my phone, almost burned my phone. I put it on the stove and I turned on the wrong plate on the stove. I turned on the one where my phone was laying on instead of where the pan was.
Okay, first time, very success.
Dude, all... Who allows you in the kitchen? Manjo.
Is it the same as the jelly you find in Germany? No, the texture, the taste completely different. That's why I'm curious to see how my mom react to German jelly. This is Gutter Speiser.
Gutter Speiser. I love that gel.
Herby flavor.
Got it in my fridge right now.
This taste in my life until I move to Germany. It is German boyfriend's favorite flavor for everything. First of all, you need have a liter of water.
Manjo.
Then according to German standard, a lot of sugar.
You don't put sugar in there? That's already sweet enough?
Put a little bit there so that it's a little bit sweet. Let's bring it to a boil now. Honestly, it's a little bit too sweet now. But I cannot go back. Now that I'm here, my mom asked if I can help her to cook some soup as well. So I'm multitasking, doing two things at the same time. Hopefully, I will not mess it up. So the water is boiling. Now we're going to put the whole bag inside, mix it up and we're almost done. Let's go. We have to leave it outside for, I guess, until it cooled out and then we're gonna put it into the fridge. Properly, it's gonna take around half a day until it's...
Usually it takes about six to eight hours, I think. To make Gutter Speiser.
It's been 24 hours.
Maybe, yeah.
And it is completely solid now.
Make it so that only your roommate can get in the kitchen. Then you're safe. I didn't even know panda leaf existed. Food from Porch. Don't forget to drink something.
People mention German food outside of Germany. I'm pretty sure many think of sausage dish. Like rightfully so, Germany is very famous for their vast majority of sausages. And I think the most famous sausage dish has to be curry wurst. And I do love it and it tastes pretty good. Since I can't spot the authentic hot wurst from Germany. I bought this one in Vietnamese state. The name of it is Germany and Vietnamese sausages. So I think it's halfway authentic already. And it have a good shape. I think it's gonna work. I hope so.
Manjo, come here.
So my niece just informed me that if I don't cut it before I put it in here, it's gonna explode. A bit too late to let me know. So while we're waiting for the sausages, let's make the sauce.
Gonna explode, oh my gosh. Oh, I never tried that sauce.
The sauce is just tomato sauce mixed with some curry and sugar and fried onion. Pretty sure, but don't want to risk it. So I bought the ready to make one already.
Yeah, we don't really eat spicy. The husband of Bunny Bestie, he doesn't eat spicy either. She does, but he doesn't. So she's always happy when I'm over because I eat spicy. The German version of spicy, let's just say that. She making curry wurst. Oh, now we're making Speiser. I am not a big fan of them. They're okay, but I'm not a big fan.
The one that made from wheat, like those Italian ones. So I thought of bringing a very traditional German noodle to her. It is called Speiser and basically you can make it at home by making a piece of...
Manjo.
With this special wheat and then you cut it into a smaller chunk. I cannot do that, so I bought already the one that is dry like this. You can eat this kind of noodle with many things, but I want to go for a very traditional one. That's why I went for a sour pratin. Basically, it's like a roast beef, but it's pretty sour. Obviously, it tastes better if you do it by yourself, but practicality, I bought the canned one already.
The canned one is not that good. That does not look good. Not at all. Okay, now it looks good.
This is pork belly of China. This is pork belly. And this is... Pork, like Vietnamese.
Pork, like Vietnamese.
Yes, like Vietnamese. You have to mix with the sauce here.
I love that cabbage. I really like it.
It's not good, is it?
Really?
Pork should have some... Or some... Have some... Of Hoi Kui Chi.
People don't speak Hoi Kui Chi, right? You have to mix a little bit, here, a little bit of pork, try it.
Pork, hot.
Yes, it's hot. Cook it. Pork, pork.
Pork, pork.
I mean, I cannot blame her. This one, even when I was in Germany, I wasn't much of a fan because I also didn't like the sour bit so much. But it's super traditional. You have to mix a little bit. Really? This is 7 bits, 7 bits.
Manjo.
Today, you have eaten Chinese food, is it good?
It's also tasty.
It's tasty, right? Good for Vietnam?
Not good for Vietnam.
Now, if you have to eat Chinese food for 5 years, can you eat it?
Can't. I'm used to Vietnam. Not good.
Yeah, okay, but I'm glad.
But do you feel honored?
German food tastes like, I mean, not properly the most authentic one since I'm not like German, German. But I'm glad I have a chance to do it.
We're gonna go with this.
Hello, it's Yuan and welcome back to my channel. Today, I'm going to try to cook a bunch of very interesting German food for my German boyfriend. I tried to make a video like this some months ago and you guys love it. I have received so many interesting weird German food recommendations. And when I Google them, both of the foods just leave me speechless. Which is why I'm very excited to make this video, cause I want to make it by myself.
It looks way too hard. I would not wear it. That's way too hard. Oh, Mad Eagle. Mad Eagle is kind of traumatizing, but delicious.
I have seen a lot of weird dishes in my life. Ladies and gentlemen, Mad Eagle. The ingredient is very simple, raw pork. And then you shape it like a hedgehog, then you eat it raw. That's it. This is a very popular dish in Germany, by the way. Normally, they would have a piece of bread and then you just put the raw pork there and then you can fry them in many bakery in Germany, actually. But remember, you cannot just eat any raw pork that you can put your hand on the supermarket in Germany. Remember to ask the employee in the supermarket or go to a butcher. They have the knowledge there, okay? So the next thing I have to do is shaping this piece of meat into the shape of a hedgehog. How does a hedgehog look like though?
Just making the ball. A person trying to... Her name is Yuan. And she is a student here in Germany. Um, that's why she's doing all that German content. She wanna show the world how Germany is like. She didn't do any Swedish stuff.
Just give me the hedgehog. Yeah, I prepared the needle, spike.
She only make German content because she live here.
When it comes to our German boyfriend, he's way better than me. He's shaping a very nice looking hedgehog right now. So the body is almost done. We need something for the eye. Normally, they use olive for it. We don't have olive, so I'm thinking of using the grape here. Now we have to use the pickle instead.
Let me type her name.
Why is it so big?
Ear. This is the most accurate hedgehog I have seen ever.
So after a lot of hard work, our little hedgehog is finished.
She does, I'm pretty sure she doesn't have any Swedish content. But you can have a look. Maybe, maybe she does. And I'm just stupid.
Are you serious? Why, Germany, why? I mean, I could understand the big step when you make it a bit long in the middle, but it's still hot outside, but this is wrong meat.
Okay, 1, 2, 3.
He has an official apology, cause I couldn't go through with it. I just couldn't do it. I cannot put it into my mouth. We're doing the next best thing, cause everyone wears the food. German boyfriend is turning it into a burger. So I'm sorry, but the next dish, I promise I will eat everything, okay?
Toto Oma, what is Toto? I know Toto. I know toto. Toto oma, by the way, means dead grandma.
I don't know why. It is a very popular dish in the East Germany before the Berlin Wall. And the main ingredient of this dish is blood sausages. I know some people might freak out over this.
Well, it's from East Germany, so obviously I don't know what that shit is, uh, what toto oma is. Yes, oh, don't be sad, maybe there is another student like her, but uh, in Sweden and does the same things, but only in Swedish.
You fill it with pig blood and properly something else. But then, they properly cook it and then dry it as well. In Vietnam, they would eat fresh mostly, so they fill it and then they cook it immediately and then they eat it. First, we need some bacon and some onion.
I'm really curious what that shit is, what she's making. I've heard of it, but I've never seen it or eaten it.
Is a lot of fat. We are good. Next, they said I have to peel the skin off the sausage and cut it into small pieces so that you can fry it with the, the rest later. I'm just gonna cut a little bit because I'm not sure how it tastes. I don't want to waste the whole thing. So this is how it look like.
I love that shit, that's so good. It's blood sausage, it's so good.
Is it weird that I'm disappointed that it doesn't taste like blood anymore? I think this is to process with a lot of um
If it wasn't that expensive, I would eating it way more.
The skin off. I'm going to saute the bacon and the onion together without oil because they fat on the bacon already until they turn golden brown. You know what, cooking 101, maybe don't put the onion in together with the bacon. Cook the bacon until they have fat already first. I would have to put some oil in here because I don't want to burn the onion. Okay, so everything is kind of brown now. I'm going to put the blood sausage in and then you have to squeeze it. So it became a, like a bunch of thingy mixed together. I need to put a vegetable broth inside as well so that the blood sausages can be sold better.
That looks disgusting.
On the pan already, it's time to seasoning. The seasoning is pretty simple.
And then I'm taking a break from my medic. I'm gonna, I'm gonna
I think this dish gonna scare the hell
Oh my
But I am actually very excited about it.
I'm not sure if we're gonna finish that video, but we, we won't be watching long anymore. I think we're gonna give her eight minutes, um and then we're gonna go back to studying because, um I wanna, I wanna start it. Four hours.
A small cut around the potato and then you boil it and later on you
So like 9pm over here?
I don't know if it works. I'm gonna try it out now. The potato is soft now, I think, so we will try to boil it with the TikTok tip.
Yeah, we need to get to pages.
Damn. He was right. Okay, that was really easy.
Oh, her nails are cute.
I couldn't pronounce that word. It is a very popular German side dish made from cabbage and then they fermented it and it smell very strong. But if you allow me, I would like
Sweden is a good country, isn't it? I always heard good things about it.
This tastes way better. It is a white cabbage. The taste is not that strong, but it tastes pretty good. Here I have the blood sausage taste. I just need to put some fried potato in it and some cabbage.
That's okay, good to know.
Thank you.
Okay, visually, what do you think about it?
I don't think that it's
If I grew up there and I was in I would like to visit Sweden one day. It's supposed to be a very safe and good country.
Okay, let's try it out.
All the Nordic countries are pretty good, to be honest. Sweden, Norway, Finland and Iceland.
Well, for me, the bacon is great, the onion is great, but the blood sausages is not that good. Like, Ireland is better. Did you eat it yet?
Iceland has better views. I really wanna travel to Iceland one day because it's, it's It's so, I don't know, I have it, in my head, it's very, very black. Because of the volcanoes and stuff. And then there is a lot of white because of the snow. That's what, that, that's my image of Iceland. I wanna visit all the Nordic countries, to be honest.
I cannot get it out of my head anymore. How the fuck I was supposed to eat this now? You ruined this dish for me, honey. I was so happy eating it.
Oh, my tablet just died.
Okay, that's better. Searching for a weird salad to make in Germany is very simple. Searching for a normal salad recipe is the hard thing.
It's a lie. Haven't been nowhere yet. Me neither, me neither. I haven't left the country that much. I was in Disneyland Paris, but I was only in Disneyland. And I was in London, but I was most of the time I was laying in bed because I was knocked out because I was sick. And my class just went to all the sightseeing things. And then I was in Japan. Oh, and also in, in the Netherlands. Those are the only countries I've been.
Smell like fish and lemon. So I'm gonna rinse it now. Next, I have to chop the fish into small pieces. In Germany, eating seafood is not something that popular. Meat is way more popular over here. Hey, what next? Chop salad and spring onion.
You could also just buy the herring salad at the store. They, they, they are sold there.
It's my secret uh, emergency food.
Into America, Netherlands, Germany, Vietnam, Japan, everything. Oh, Vietnam, I wanna visit Vietnam as well.
Put them into water
Yeah.
And in 10 days, you have spring onion again.
But there is no way you're gonna get me to the Americas. Nah, nah, never happen.
It's super tiny and it smell super intense when you cook it. This is a German salad. Look how big it is compared to each other. Now we need an apple. We're gonna mix the apple into this fish salad. I told German boyfriend about the food that I'm gonna cook for this video and surprisingly, he heard about most of them, but he didn't try any of them yet. But he said that it's popular in other region of Germany, not his region. Trying to say that his food in his area is not that weird. So we have the diced apple and we need a pickle. Here I have salad, green onion, pickle and apple. Here I have the fish.
Let me get my blanket, I'm getting cold, I'm, I'm gonna blanket.
The dressing is very heavy. It consists of yogurt, heavy cream and mayonnaise. In Vietnam, we do salad, mostly we use lemon and garlic. I will make the same amount of cream and yogurt together and then a little bit of
From time to time, I do enjoy herring salad, but only a little bit. Yeah, come on.
A lot here. Then I just put some lemon and I will just keep the apple cider because I don't think we have them.
Yeah.
Now we add pepper and salt. Look how cute our salt and pepper I fucked up. Too sweet. Let me try to put some lemon in.
What do you mean sweet? It's not supposed to be sweet. It's not worth it, every three years, it can It, it, it is, it, it sucks, um, and it's not looking it's not looking good for the next four years. So it's not gonna happen.
I don't think this is gonna be good.
Come on.
So I put the salad to the fridge for 10 minutes as per the recipe. Now I have two identical salad bowl, one for me and one for my honey bear.
Thank you for cooking.
He sound very exciting already.
Well, you don't eat the herring salad as a salad, you, you eat it on top of bread. I would be happy to.
Even the idea of eating raw fish with cream, it is raw fish, isn't it?
Is it raw fish?
Think so.
It's a ca- it's a fish in a can, why is it raw?
German sushi.
So I'm gonna count from one to three.
It, I think it is raw, but it's I think, I don't know, is it raw? Oh, she looks so happy.
It's like yogurt dressing with a heavy cream and mayonnaise. Very interesting mixture. I just, I don't like the fish here. It's, it's, no matter what I do, it's still very fishy and very, very fish.
I'm trying to eat my way around the fish.
Honey, try the fish. Do it for the experience. When it comes to fish, German boyfriend is very picky. No skin, no bones.
That is not true.
He only can eat the white part of the fish.
Okay, wow. It's not as bad as I thought, but
Very sour, right?
Yeah, it's pretty sour. Okay, let's freeze it for my
Oh shit, we have to go back to study. We have to go back to study, guys. It's, 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 oh no, it's n- 9:01 already. Let's go, let's go, we have to go back to study. I forget to thank something, guys. I will see you in 25, oh. I will see you in 25 minutes and your music, obviously. So, see you soon. Lizard, what happened? Why did you, what, what? Why did you ban Kegaf and, and unbun? What? What just happened? Oh, okay, okay. I was confused for a second. That's just Yeah, I will see you in 25 minutes. Please don't kill each other. Break time. Break time! Oh yeah, gonna be honest with you. We probably only gonna get half a page, not the full page. I'm just tired, okay? I'm just very, very tired. So, it might be that we only get half a page. I'm gonna do another study session and then we're gonna, then we're gonna go. And what part are you talking about, Lucian? What is M H Wilds? What's that? For game reason, two weeks in the current benchmark seems to be the actual book. Monster Hunter, oh! Yeah, I'm not an expert on that, that game. I don't know. I've never played it. I, I think... Teo played it before? But I'm not sure. I wanna go to the fireplace. I gotta be typing and we're gonna make it morning. Does that change anything? It does. It makes it look late. I gotta go, okay, 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 okay. When will the next free weekend be, by the way? What, what do you mean free weekend? What is, what free weekend? Huh? Fireplace, yeah, fireplace is very cozy. Fireplace is very cozy. Hi, Yaza. Did I say hello to you before? I'm not sure. Ah, oh, okay, okay, okay. Okay, okay. Oh my gosh. Yeah, we probably only get half a pa- even, if we even get half a page. That's the thing. I'm not sure if we even get half a page. And that, that's gonna be pretty bad because on that chapter, I was supposed to write... Around three pages. But there are no other sources. The sources are really bad. And the fact that rather good specs cannot use them. I do not understand what you just wrote, but it's okay. It's okay. Yeah, but, ah, okay. I have no idea what you guys are talking about. That's, that's... That's just, uh, too much. I mean, I don't, I don't think the game's worth it. You can cushion my PC bad or... My PC potato. A potato pussy! A potato pussy! Yeah, we lost in this game. Same, same. I, I don't even know what the specs to my computer are. Let me see. It, it takes a moment. It takes a moment to load. Oh shit, I have to log in. Please remember... Okay, it remembers me. It takes a moment to load. Oh shit, I have to log in. Please remember... Okay, it remembers me. Because I do not remember my password. If my computer does not know my password, I do not know it either. Because I do not remember my password. If my computer does not know my password, I do not know it either. I have... Oh, I think I got a gaming computer as well. I have... Oh, I think I got a gaming computer as well. Okay, so guys, I have... Okay, so guys, I have... I have no idea my... What information... What is? But I know I have to go back to study, but... I have no idea my... What information... What is? But I know I have to go back to study, but... I got an i7 Intel Core processor. I don't know if that's good. I got an i7 Intel Core processor. I don't know if that's good. And I got an Nvidia GeForce RTX 3050. Is that good? And I got an Nvidia GeForce RTX 3050. Is that good? Is that good? Is that good? Also, I got 512GB storage and 60GB memory. Also, I got 512GB storage and 60GB memory. That's all the information I got on my computer. That's all the information I got on my computer. There's that. There's that. Is that good? Is that good? You can run cozy stream and even play some games. That's all we are. You can run cozy stream and even play some games. That's all we are. At least a bot. Maybe a... At least a bot. Maybe a... Really? Really? 3050 is nice for low and medium? 3050 is nice for low and medium? Wow! Wow! I have no idea what you just wrote, Kegav. That's... I have no idea what you just wrote, Kegav. That's... That's too much for my brain. 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 But yeah, I'm gonna give this one back and get a new one. But yeah, I'm gonna give this one back and get a new one. When is it? How much longer do I own this? When is it? How much longer do I own this? Got it for 18 months. So 1, 2... Got it for 18 months. So 1, 2... I win 2, 3, 4, 5... I win 2, 3, 4, 5... Wait. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. Wait. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. Okay, another 8 months and then I get a new computer. Okay, another 8 months and then I get a new computer. Yeah. Yeah. One could argue your GPU is a bit outdated, but seems good. One could argue your GPU is a bit outdated, but seems good. Upgrading soon, just... Upgrading soon, just... Ahhh, okay. Still have no idea what's going on, but I'm going back to study. Ahhh, okay. Still have no idea what's going on, but I'm going back to study. See you in 25 minutes. See you in 25 minutes.